All right, here we go. Does anyone need a break before this starts? No? All right. Good evening, everyone. It is now six thirty-eight P.M. and the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four City Council meeting will come to order. This evening's invocation is presented by Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you'd like to bow your head, that would be wonderful. Heavenly Father, most times when we start these meetings with a invocation, we mostly talk about things that we need help with. And that's a good thing, because things always work out better when we go to you first. Tonight, I'd really like to spend some time talking about the blessings that you provide to us in the wonderful city of Beller Beach. My wife and I have been here almost five years, Father, you know that. And it never confuses me when I come across the bridge and the beauty that I get to see and the blessings that I get to see in this wonderful city. There's people who save all the year to come and take vacations here, and we actually live here. So that blessing, we all thank you for that, Father. The people that live in this wonderful city, the neighbors, the friends, you know, when I drive through this city, Father, and you know this, I get to see people walking their dogs, they stop to talk to their neighbors, they have conversations, they enjoy each other. And you know better than I that this is not always that every town or city gets the benefit from. So thank you, Father, for all of these things that we get from your blessings. And closing, Father, I'd like to also, I just had a thought earlier this week that, you know, the city has the opportunity to spend three minutes up at the podium to talk about anything they want to that's not already on the agenda. Wouldn't it be kind of a wonderful thing if we had citizens and people who live here take the opportunity to come up to that podium and, and talk with you, Father, about things that, that you have given to them, things they're happy about, even challenges that are made before them? So I'd just like to toss that out there, Father, that if the citizens and people of our city want to do that, that would be awesome. Christ's name and pray. Amen.
Amen. Now, please rise and join me in the flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Renee, I'm going to ask you to roll again.
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Elliott.
Still present.
Mayor Dave Gannis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Renee. All right. First item is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
It's made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Now we move on to citizen comments. If any citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. We ask that you limit your time to no more than three minutes, and remember to direct all questions and comments to the council. Would anyone like to speak? Yes, sir.
Sort of as a follow-up to Councilmember Robinson.
Could you state your name and address?
Leslie Notaro. As a follow-up to Councilmember Roberts' invocation, I hope you guys all got to see that full moon last night. It was unbelievable. That's it.
Thank you very much. Would any other citizens like to speak? Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank you guys and gals for getting this opportunity to bring some issues there. My name is Glenn Daniels, nine-twenty-one Cedar Drive. I have a very simple question, actually, and it's actually for the city manager. I'm just wondering, are we still on pace or on schedule in order to get the, excuse me, in order to get the valve put in in order to keep from the flooding that's happening at the end of the block?
We don't respond during citizen comments. What we do is we give the responses whenever the city manager's time comes up. So it's not a back-and-forth conversation. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, citizen comments are now closed. All right, item three, we have presentations from Penous County Sheriff's Office. Most likely, we only have code enforcement. Is that correct?
At this time, yes, sir.
Okay. Come on up, Deputy Trump.
Good evening, this is Mayor Deputy Trump of Penous County Sheriff's Office. I am a code enforcement officer. I apologize, I do not honestly know what the pull-up is as far as the sergeant or what would be normally presenting for you, and I can try and find the answer for you.
I can probably answer that for you. It's because we're off schedule.
And that very well may be that they didn't get the notice that the meeting had been changed, so.
It's not the first time that's happened, so it's probably on us, but I don't know.
Anyway, we can catch up next, next being if we need be as far as any, if anything major that happens and stuff, I'll make sure to pass that on.
I think City Manager Reed, you have that report, so you could give that, you could give the report after, after Deputy Trump gives his code enforcement report. They work? Yes, they agree.
My report is very short for the month. I have thirty-five entries throughout that. The main thing we dealt with, again, with the hot weather in the summer, is the high grass issues and weeds and things like that in front yards and stuff. So that's one of the major issues that we are trying to address with the residents and trying to take care of that. Other than that, we had a couple of trailers and boats that were easily taken care of, a couple of unmaintained pools, that one of the cases is still kind of ongoing with that one, because at the point, there's nobody at the residence, and we're trying to follow up with family members and trying to get some other help with that. Beach enforcement's been a little bit like this month and one I was on vacation too because of the extreme high tides that we've been having, and unfortunately, people have lost some beach through the storms or anything else. So it's a little bit harder to get out the ETV, but we are trying to get out there. I know the nighttime guys have been out there quite a bit, as much as they can with the lower tides, and trying to watch, so. With that, basically, I had five entries reference just other enforcements, which are contacts found property and alarm call at a meeting that I needed to attend. Anything else or any questions that I can answer for you?
Philson.
I have one question, and this is not directly related to Beller Beach. I wonder if you could provide any insight on the number of what seem to be derelict boats that are out in the harbor here?
The derelict boats are handled by our Marine Enforcement Office. They are, you know, actively tagging those vessels as they can. Again, understand that it's not an overnight process in order to get, I used to be in charge of the Marine unit myself before I originally retired the first time. It usually takes sometimes thirty to possibly sixty days to get these boats out, because one, they have to go through that type of investigation in order to try and find the owner, try and get the owner has to have the opportunity in order to bring the boat back into code, raise the vessel. It's been sunk, like there's a sailboat over there at the moment right now, which has been tagged. Anyway, they have to have a certain opportunity and certain amount of days. After that, it would go to, once that hearing is done and is deemed that the boat is basically able to be salvaged, then we would take over the boat. And then after that, it takes, you have to get a salvage company out there and get them contracted through funds with the state and county in order to get the boat either raised or towed out and basically disposed of. So it's just not an overnight process, unfortunately.
No, and I understand that, but like, I am concerned whether it is budget, I mean, are there funds available to help deal with these things?
The major amount of funds usually comes through grants by the state through FWC, but the county does kick in a certain amount of funds to try and help with the ongoing problem. But the majority of the funds come through grants through FWC.
And can you provide any insight as to why this is happening with seemingly more frequent rates?
Man, you know, just through history and everything else, you'll get people that have lived on these boats, you know, and for some reason, they're not living on them anymore, or they do live on them and unfortunately, they become so deteriorated that they will fall under that category. You'll get the boats that people just can't afford to take care of them anymore, maintain them, and they'll basically anchor them out there and let them go and, you know, just don't maintain them anymore, and eventually, they're going to fall into that category again.
Thank you.
So, very.
Yeah, and I think historically, we have been no boats, and all it takes is one. There is two, and it just continues on.
It does. I know, I know there's a couple out there right now on the other side of the bridge, and I know that they have been tagged, like the sunk sailboat, you can see the tag, it's actually on the mast itself. And our Marine unit is doing a really good job, because we have over seven hundred miles of coastline in Penous County alone itself. And there is, you know, a lot of boats throughout Beller Beach, throughout Beller Bluffs, Dunedin, all these major cities, St. Pete. St. Pete usually takes care of most of their own, but we do help out in the St. Pete area of that and with FWC also. So all the entities are in there trying to, you know, handle this problem and to keep up with it.
Is the southern boat leaking?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, as far as you're, I would assume you're talking about fuels or things.
Yes.
Not to my knowledge, no. If they had problems with leaking fuel or anything else, then the Coast Guard would become involved with that, and they would immediately take action in order to mitigate that.
Mr. Bankard.
I just want to thank you for cleaning up the other side of the street on that vacant lot. I don't know what you did or whatever, but I guess.
To the word. We finally found somebody to, you know, take, manage it and everything else, and actually a couple of the lots on the other side of the street now been sold or taken over by construction companies, and I've already talked to them. I actually went out and I talked to them. One is like Al, for example, is Alvarez Construction, and a Rolex guy, and he said he would try and keep everything cut and managed in the funds as much as he can.
The one I know that was rolling in the street about Gulf Boulevard in that February shooting.
Finally found somebody.
Any other questions or comments for the deputy?
Yes.
No? What, I actually like having you up here, and so I'm curious, did you receive a copy of the regular law enforcement report?
I, I do not usually print it out, but I do get it, because they do the email just like they would send a packet out, and so from now on, in case this would happen again, I can print it out.
I just think you're a much better speaker than the city manager is. If you would, would you just print that out, and if, if the guys don't show up, whoever it is that normally presents, would you present for us?
I would be more than happy to do that.
All right, I greatly appreciate it. City Manager Reed.
Hi.
I've been giving you a hard time. You're up. Thank you, Deputy.
So I'm doing the police report, correct?
Police report.
Okay. So I took a look at it, and it looks like we've had a pretty good low streak since June twenty-four and July twenty-four, we've only had one crime reported under the assault category. Year-to-date, July twenty-twenty-three, year-to-date, we're at fourteen crimes reported, and now twenty-four, year-to-date, we're at ten, so we're coming down, at least compared to last year. There were five people arrested in the city in the month of July. There was one felony, two misdemeanors, and four traffic misdemeanors. Deputy Activity, there was a total of six hundred and sixty-three events, resulting in seven hundred and fifty units responding, and most of those were direct patrols and house checks, all of that traffic. So routine things. And there were three crashes reported in Beller Beach, and I noticed one of them was at the intersection of Gulf Boulevard. I didn't cause it, but I'm interested in more information on what caused that. That's all I got.
All right, since you have the same information we do, I'm not going to ask those questions. Next up is item number four. I don't believe anyone from the Pennos Suncoast Fire and Rescue District is here tonight, so we're just going to move on to item number five, which is the City Attorney's Report. Mr. Moore, you're up. No report, Mr. Bankard. No report. Any questions for Mr. Moore? Yes, sir. Bill? All right. Item six, City Manager Report. Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Start off at the top of the list. We had a meeting this week with Duke and Utilic Consultants of Florida. I've asked them to come to our October meeting, which I believe is going to be the fourteenth of October. So both UCF and Duke will be present, and I want them to first catch up the council on where we're at in the project, and then discuss options as far as the placement of the equipment for Phase Two, which is North Causeway Boulevard. We've kind of been in the standstill, trying to figure that out and request these minutes, so I think it's a good time to just go over everything and have Duke Energy present the options that are available. And that's all I have for that, so I look forward to the October meeting. The stormwater improvement project, as you can see, since we started doing the surveys and doing the grade stakes, harbor contracting has been replacing the, the curbs on the streets from fourteen, they've gone fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, just recently finished nineteenth, twenty, twenty-first, and now they're back down to, to Ninth Street. So they've done the south side of the Ninth Street. That leaves us the north-southern Ninth Street, the south side of Twenty-third. We have tonight a discussion of Twenty-second Street, which we wanted to add to the project. So that would be all the curbs. At this time, the paving contractor is scheduled to do all the streets in October. So it's going to be a minimal resurface for the two-thirds of the streets that are left on the project. Code review services, we did the work session last month. Since then, Mr. Serna and I got a conference call with the FDM, Florida Department of Emergency Management Flood Ordinance Consultant to discuss, just updating our flood code, which is Chapter Seventy-Six. And after Mr. Serna's done updating what we discussed, and City Attorney will prepare it to start doing the first readings on the chapters that we're going to change the ordinance. I had a request come in from the outstanding, the lien on one-hundred-and-three Twenty-Fifth Street, which was the outstanding construction permit that accumulated as of July fifteenth, it's at a balance of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. So I was reached out to asking council to consider a partial lien release for another property, and if it would even be considered, and how much would be required. So, so what's happening is the owner of the house at one-hundred-and-three Twenty-Fifth Street has another property he has on the market. Someone is willing to buy it, but I found out that the lien, the way it works is they cross link, so he can't sell his other property until we release it off of the lien that's on one-hundred-and-three Twenty-Fifth Street. So I just wanted to present that to City Council for consideration, if they would do some sort of partial lien release, and if so, if they will consider, then how much will you require to do, to release the property? It's on eight-hundred-and-nine Harbor Oak Lane in Clearwater.
You know, that's a lot to dump on us without any warning. I think I'd like to see some numbers on paper that we can take with us and think about it.
Okay.
And maybe bring it back up at either next meeting or, or work session. Okay.
Are they repetitive charges, like because we didn't respond daily, you get taxed to one like hundred and fifty dollars a day, exactly?
Yes, it was.
More than we is?
Based on the construction trade of the permit, there was daily fines on each, closeout to finish each.
And that's the beef of the, the three hundred thousand dollars?
That's, that's all of it. It was just an ongoing finding of the permit being expired.
All right. I'm curious, we, there, there was finally payment on the other, the other home, and we, we gave a partial, right?
Yes.
Is there any way to, just thinking out of the box here, but is there any way to provide a partial lien release, but not release the debt?
Yes, so we can release, we can do a partial lien release if there's, most especially with this partial payment, we can say, well, in order to release as to property Y, that's not, let's say property X is the property at issue with the lien directly, property Y will release for X amount, but we're not releasing the remainder. You know, so let's say a hundred thousand is owed, and you say for twenty grand, and I'm just making up numbers, I'm not making recommendations. Let's say a hundred thousand is owed, you say for twenty thousand, we can release property Y, the remaining eighty thousand remains due on. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Well, that's, that's part of it. And the other side would be, can you release, say, okay, now we have the eighty thousand dollars as a continuing lien, the debt is still a hundred thousand, but we only have a lien.
I see what you're saying, that the distinction between the debt and the lien, I'm not familiar with that.
Close, but.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that paradigm, but usually what I've seen is you do a release of the lien as to that property, and still don't allow them to close, but at that point, you've, you've got the unjust enrichment element, not unjust enrichment, but like the debt was a hundred, you've received some remuneration for it, you can't recover a second time for that same amount of debt, so I, I want to look at that paradigm, but the more traditional ways, we'll take partial payment to release this other, you know, third property, that's not the principle.
Because like, you never fight a mortgage, the notice to book.
Right.
That's what I think.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Anything else, Mr. Reed?
Yes, I want to jump back. I remembered the citizen inquiry on the stormwater amount. So I'm waiting on a flange that fits the pipe at the swell. We, we had the valve, but originally, we were going to have the contractor modify the outflow to fit the valve in. It's, it's an electrical valve, and I found out through the LaPro, which is the valve company, that they do make a flange that we can use. It's slightly smaller than the electrical pipe, but what it does is you bolt it in and then you, you mud around the flange itself instead of modifying all of our reinforced concrete part, pipe. So I expect to have the flange piece in October. And yes, I'm aware of recently with the high tides, there's been a lot of water coming up in the street. One thing we have noticed is even the, on Palm, or Palm Drive, the county system, the tidal water was coming out of their valve, so we did, we did hear from residents up Palm that said that's never happened before, and we, you know, filed it with the county and made them aware.
What, what was the big underlying issue? I've, I've never seen so many streets flooded with, at a low tide. I've never seen that before. And I mean, there were probably eight or nine streets that were underwater that day.
That was, you're talking about, I was recently talking about this week with the high tide we've experienced, but you're talking about a couple of weeks ago with the rain events. I would sum that up to just the capacity of the water, the flow, it wasn't getting out as fast as it was coming in, or from the rainfall. I do know that there was a lot of counties or a lot of cities throughout Penous County, especially inland, that had experienced fifty-year rain events, and it exposed all the weaknesses to the drainage.
See, this, this looked to me like it was sewage.
There was some sanitary sewer overflow. I did report that. The county is still doing smoke tests. I heard some feedback that they get, they're concerned about the laterals, and that's where the water's coming in, but I also know that the pipe on Eighteenth that we're planning to line is compromised, so that, especially on Eighteenth, where it seems to be the, the lateral where it's going over, that, that may help the problem, at least that the water will not get into the ground as quickly by, by our stormwater pipe.
All right, and then the other question that I have for you is, have you heard anything from the county concerning our traffic matter and their recommendations?
I received an email. They said that they were continuing to make the same recommendations. I asked, they said they looked into the merge lane, I don't have numbers on that, and also some data with the, with the stop bars. But I, what I did ask them is, they were saying that they did not, they weren't tracking any near missed data, but I asked them to provide the data for us, because I thought when I bring it to you, you're going to want to see what they're, what they're basing their conclusions off of, but they're still making the same recommendations. And I also asked them to put all those recommendations in writing, along with the stuff, moving the stop bars. So I'm waiting for that to trickle out and hope that I present it to them.
Any other questions for the city manager?
I have a couple more things. iWork, which is the work maintenance software, we started using it this week, it's been going well. The staff's been doing it on their iPad. We're also, we're finishing, like putting together the database for the, the setup for the stormwater management system, which is how we're going to do our inspection and reportings, so we're still troubleshooting that, but actually having the staff start entering their work orders, get used to the system, we're kind of working through the little problems as they come up, but I just wanted to say that we're, we're excited about it, and we see it being very beneficial in the future. I've actually been discussing with Deputy Trump that I would like to try to start doing code reports through the software as well, because I think if we can start building the reports that way, I can use the software on the reports instead of messing with the Excel sheets every month, save time.
See, this is what happens. You say something nice about the deputy, and then he gets an action item.
And then one more thing, the HVAC unit for the office side of the building, it's, it lost a condenser coil, just wear and tear, lost the gas, and so we're running off of one condenser coil. The HVAC programmer came in and was able to keep it pretty cool still, so we're, we're looking at replacement of the condenser coil, it's about twelve thousand five hundred dollars. That's the lowest number I got out of three quotes. I'm planning to purchase and then provide counsel to report on that repair.
All right. Anything else?
That is all.
Mr. Bankard.
That storm event, and Mayor was talking about with low tide, how many inches of rain did we get at that, like hour and a half?
It was a couple of days.
At that one?
Did you have a day?
No, I'm talking about the one, we had a low tide, it was like.
Friday around five o'clock.
Hands, whatever happened, yeah.
Oh, that last, the last one, right. I think the last time I looked at, like, just the weather, precipitation charts, it was like four or five inches.
Yeah, just in that hour and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, and about eight years ago, people remember, we had almost about the same time, it was at high tide, and it was only an hour, but it flooded, it didn't come in the houses, that guy, but it was, it was bad. Like you said, this was at probably the lowest point of the tide, it was almost a negative tide, it just came down in buckets.
Not good. All right, any other questions or comments for the city manager?
One comment, and that is regarding the code review process. Attorney Mora has given me a lot of really good information. I have reviewed that and reviewed the ordinance regarding suns, and I withdraw any objection.
Say that one more time.
I withdraw any objection to the signs we're going to propose.
All right, that's good to know. Thank you. Did you have anything to say? No? All right. Does that conclude your report, Mr. Reed?
This is it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, now we are up to the city clerk's report.
Captain Liner and Chief Davidson were provided information on tonight's meeting, and the change of the dates. Unfortunately, they just did not show up this evening.
They, we, all of the municipality schedules work with each other, and all it takes is throwing one off, and then they can't hand, so I understand.
Additionally, Dominic DeCosimo, who is on the agenda this evening for a potential appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, he was also available on September fourth, but has since left the country and is unavailable this evening.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
That's all.
All right, any questions or comments for the city clerk? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Rose. All right, now we are up to the consent agenda, items eight through ten. This is for approval of the August fifth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting minutes, approval of the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four city council work session minutes, and approval of the August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four city council work session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve, as submitted and proposed. Motion made by Frank Bankard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Lloyd Roberts, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just, I have one comment, and that is regarding the August nineteen minutes, the very last two lines of the page one. It refers to access insurance and the action terms, access, E-X-C-E-S-S.
Noted, thank you.
That will pair with, there's more on the next page.
That was it?
That's it.
Is that enough that we can just make the correction and...
Oh, the scripters errors can be addressed that way, yes.
Okay, all right, great. So in that case, is that an all in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. Now we're on to the regular agenda, item number eleven. This is for consideration of appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board. We have one candidate, but he's not here. It's Mr. Dominic DeCosimo. Do we want to move forward with this appointment, or do we, would we prefer to put it off until the next meeting, which is October the fourteenth?
Now?
Fourteenth. Thanks, Council.
It doesn't, I'm fine either way.
General consensus here? Well, let's just call for a motion. Before that, we need to go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to comment on this item? Nope, citizen comments are now closed. Would anyone like to make a motion appointing Mr. DeCosimo to Planning and Zoning Board?
Is there anybody here that is on that board or knows this gentleman?
I spoke with him back and forth a couple of times about the responsibility, and we went over the terms and what, what the board does. He, he's interested in serving on the board, if he does, he's interested in being the chair of the board. Right now, we have one new member that was appointed, we have not had a meeting yet, so it would be voted on within the board, but he wants to take an active leadership role. But he, through me in discussion, has taken a lot of consideration to volunteering.
I think because of Planning and zoning is, well, first off, we've asked for a motion. Is anyone making a motion on this or not? Because if we don't make a motion, we don't have to discuss it. I'll, I'll make a motion. All right, motion made by Frank Bankard. What is the motion?
To discuss the, Mr. DeCosimo, I want to give a motion to discuss it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, now we can talk about it. So what I was going to say is that the Planning and Zoning Board and Board of Adjustments are very important. They're the, they're the two boards that mean the most to this community. I think that especially someone that's wanting to make his way to be the chair of this particular board, I would like to actually see his face and give him the opportunity to address the council, share his, his desire, why he wants to be on Planning and Zoning, and, and then we vote him in properly. Any other discussion at this time?
I agree. We thank the advocate for his volunteerism, but I think we also do diligence.
Anyone else? Yes?
My only, my only question, Renee, is you had mentioned he was going to be here on the fourth, but now he's out of the country. Do you know when he's going back?
I do not have that information.
I think it's roughly three weeks, three or four weeks, from what I understand, from his wife who volunteers parts of it.
So there's a good chance he would be back before our October meeting?
It's going to be close, but hopefully, yes.
Okay. This is a, a roll call vote. Any other comments?
Oh, this is for consideration, I believe Attorney Moore can elaborate, but I believe for land development code, we need to have any of the ordinances we're proposing reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board.
Yes, that's, as a duty, power and duty of that board, that's, that's accurate. Mr. Reeder, procedurally, I just want to be clear, the motion made was to discuss, so there's no motion that would have a roll call vote, as I understand it, it sounds like the board is moving towards tabling this issue rather than substantively...
That's what I was about to call.
Okay.
Would someone like to...
I just, I just have one question. The city manager interviewed this guy, Mr. Williams, or the candidate?
Yes, but I understand the mayor's...
No, and I, I agree a hundred percent with the mayor, we have to agree more on the board without being... I agree that Planning and Zoning Board is preparing, bringing this...
Yep.
I would not lose a candidate. So, well, we can, right now that we're just discussing, and there's, there's a motion on table just to move forward with this. So we can move forward, or we can table it, or we event in council. I motion to vote for it. All right, in that case, let's go ahead, and we have to vote, we can do this with a, a voice vote just to move forward. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
This is not putting him in the, in the seat. Now we, we actually have to, we need another motion to appoint Mr. DeCosimo to the Planning and Zoning Board.
I make a motion.
All right, a second?
Second.
All right, in that case, Renee, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
No.
And Mayor Gaddis?
No.
All right, so the motion dies, and we'll try it again whenever he gets back. All right, item twelve, consideration of appointment as an alternate to the Board of Adjustments. We have one candidate, Mr. Douglas Prescott. Is Mr. Prescott here? There he is. Would you like to come up to the podium and introduce yourself to the council?
I am Doug Prescott Senior, one hundred Willey Drive, I live in Beller Beach now, since, I think, seventy-one or seventy, so a bit of a run, I think I'm Willey Drive from nineteen ninety-seven. Grew up on Eighteenth Street, built the first one in Morgan and Hibiscus, and in ninety-seven, I took my house down and built it and moved back here in two thousand and two.
Mr. Prescott, have you served on anything for the city before?
I've served on, by the way, you got, I did the Board of Adjustments, which I really enjoyed. I had to resign from that when I moved away to build my house. I had to move off Beller Beach for about six months. I stayed as long as I could. There was nothing available to rent on my second home, I had to rent, because it took two years to build the house. So I served as city council, I served vice mayor, deputy presiding officer. I was appointed after I got done doing that to, we just changed the form of government, and I was involved with that, I was, and they appointed me to interview the potential first-time city manager for Beller Beach. And the person I appointed, thought it would be a good choice, was Nancy McCullough, who became my first.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Prescott? I think he's well-versed, let's vote before he changes his mind.
Yeah.
All right, now before we do that, we're going to, thank you, Mr. Prescott, before we do that, we're going to go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to comment on the possible appointment of Mr. Douglas Prescott for an alternate member of the Board of Adjustments? Nope. All right, citizen comments are closed. Counsel, I'm going to need a motion to appoint Mr. Prescott as an alternate to the Board of Adjustments. Motion, motion is made by Frank Bankard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. Mr. Bankard, do you have a floor?
Like I said, I believe he's well-versed, probably more than a lot of us, we should grab him out there.
I agree. Any other comments, Ms. Counsel? No. All right, this is to appoint Douglas Prescott as an alternate to the Board of Adjustments. Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes. So, Mr. Prescott, you are a blood for punishment and welcome back. Thank you for serving our community.
All right, now we are on to item number thirteen. This is for consideration of a correction to Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four, Resolution of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, Permeable Consumer Present and Indicated Increase to the City Solid Waste Collection as disposal rate. It's making related findings and providing severability and effective date. It's been the first and final reading of Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero four by title only. Substantively, though, I'll allow the manager to speak to this. You've already adopted a resolution substantially similar to this. Subsequent to its adoption, administration realized there was a scripter's error having to deal with the percentages or the transmitted or translated actual rate flowing from those percentages, so this is an attempt to resolve that. Some of you have heard me joke in the past that we don't make mistakes, we make amendments, and this is a reflection of that process.
In this case, a fifty cent a member, I believe.
So I'd prefer the manager to speak to that substantively.
Okay, we expect to see only fifty cents on the bill.
So there's three rates, and each rate was meant to increase by two dollars and fifty cents, and that's bi-monthly. And in the transition, I had it, I had it correct on my calculation sheet, but the resolution itself was short fifty cents on the multifamily can rate. It was the increase from forty-eight dollar, or sorry, from fifty-three dollars of fifty-five, fifty. So it's just a correction so that the resolution states the proper rate, and then I can submit it to Pinellas County Utilities.
Thank you, Ms. Reeder. All right, let's go to the citizens for comments. This is for consideration of the corrected Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four. Would anyone like to speak? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Counsel, I'm going to need a motion to approve the correction to Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four, where the volatile family can price is fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. Do I have a motion? Motion. Motion made by Frank Bankard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. Mr. Bankard, do you have a floor?
I feel we had no longer alternative, but like my trash, I don't like neighbors' trash either, so.
I think it speaks for itself, I don't know what to do with it. Thank you, Mr. Bankard. Would anyone else like to speak on this topic? Nope. All right, in that case, Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes, and so the resolution correction passes humanely. Now we're on to item number fourteen, consideration of an amendment to the interlocal agreement for the creation of the Pinellas County Metropolitan Planning Organization. Mr. Reeder, you have the floor.
Yes, this is sent to us as an interlocal agreement for our out-front court of Pinellas, and it's an amendment to the original interlocal agreement that each city involved, they're asking for a signature and approval. The highlights of the changes to the agreement as they're updating the seats, there was current, there was previously thirteen members, and they're proposing to increase to nineteen members, and that is based on the twenty twenty U.S. Census report of population. The seats being added are two seats to the city of St. Petersburg, a seat to the city of Clearwater, a seat to the city of Tarpin Springs, the county commission increasing one seat to maintain a percentage of the total seats, I believe it was twenty percent. And then they're, they're splitting the inland and north of inland and south to allow for shorter rotation for the terms. So, had an overview for the city of Beller Beach, we're still included with other beach cities as holding one seat. So if you look at what they're proposing, going from thirteen members to nineteen members, you know, we still have the one seat, so for Beller Beach, it'd be less of a share of the, of the voting rights. And that's pretty much summarizing it.
And did you speak with Mr. Moore about what happens if we don't sign this?
Yes, I, I spoke to him today, and he's prepared to answer.
Well, I think I'm maybe oversomething what I'm prepared to do. No, I don't know, I don't know the precise cascade of, of what would happen had, if you did not sign on to this. My strong advice would be that you do sign on to it, as it is a matter of federal and statutory compliance. I don't know what funds would be, what funds or projects could potentially be withheld or impacted by not participating in the MBO. It is a metropolitan planning organization, as the, as the resolution and interlocal agreement set forth, it's every other community in, in some form within Pinellas County is a part of it. I'm not sure were you to be the outlier in that process, that what precisely would flow from it, as I, I did receive the inquiry, I received it late in the afternoon, and I, up until this point, understood this to be, I wouldn't quite say a housekeeping matter, but, you know, something that's generally typically done as part of general compliance and upkeep.
Right, and what I didn't really understand is, is why so many beach communities are basically our voice and our vote is being dumbed down by, by adding more seats to the county commission, the city of Clearwater, and the city of St. Petersburg.
I, I think that's, you know, in, inasmuch as you look at the resolution and its material, that's reflected in the population trends in those jurisdictions, where we've lost for any multiplicity of reasons, from housing crises to short-term rentals, to insert reason here, you've lost your voter base, your, your population base as compared to some of those larger mainland communities. And I think, and as the seats are portioned based on your population trends, that's how that dynamic is playing out, based on how they have been structured.
And it's probably because we're fully built out versus the other municipalities are able to build.
As, as you see, I mean, if you're using the twenty twenty census, which this is, and you go five years, there's, as you, as you aptly noted, if you're in the city of Tarpin Springs in the last five years, you've seen some real, real development, real growth and developments, there's only, they're not building any more beaches, you know, and so there's, there's only so much folks can do, and then you factor in again, the population trends that you're seeing, and where people are, are setting their residences, their, their domiciles, and I think those two factors go together and give you the result you have here. But again, as this is how funds and resources are allocated for purposes of planning, we, we are members of Ford Pinellas, right, and this sort of flows from that. This is an outgrowth of that planning process.
Right, okay. Well, let's go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? Yes.
John Hanson, Twenty-second Street. If I'm following a conversation and this proposal, it's the largest cities that want more seats, and to your point, Mr. Mayor, like you, you stated, it seems like we're losing our voice, we're being dumbed down, so to speak, you know, I'm...
Yeah, I, I would, I appreciate you coming up and speaking. After you're finished, I will continue this conversation.
Okay, but I just, the big guys keep winning, and I, I don't think, I, I don't know that we can... But I just, the big guys keep winning, and I don't think, I don't know that we can beat them, even if all those small communities along, you know, the beaches join together. So I'm not for it personally, because I don't want to see our voices diminished. They've got enough voices as it is. That's my comment to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensick. Would anyone else like to speak? All right. Counsel, I'm going to need a motion to approve the amendment to the interlocal agreement for the creation of the Pinellas County Metropolitan Planning Organization. Do I have a motion?
I will.
Motion made by Lloyd Roberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Shaw Elliott. All right. So, Mr. Roberts, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really see any benefit of saying that we're not going to participate. They are still going to exist. We're just going to have no vote at that point. We're not even going to be part of the organization. So that's why I'm in favor of at least maintaining and keeping that seat, even though from a percentage standpoint, by the organization adding additional seats at other cities, from a percentage standpoint, our voice is lessening, but at least we have one.
And this reminds me of a situation we had a few years ago whenever they were proposing raising the gas tax. It was, you remember that, Mr. Reefer?
A little.
Okay. So they, they sent us pretty much an interlocal agreement similar to this, and it was us buying into the gas tax increase. I don't think it actually happened, but they twisted our arms because if we didn't sign it, we wouldn't get the benefit, even though ours is just a tiny little bit, we wouldn't get any money at all. And so we went ahead and signed the thing, even though we didn't really agree with raising our gas taxes. So this is just another situation where I think you're right. Mr. Mora, if we don't sign it, then there's probably some tiny benefit that we won't get, but also we won't be included at all in the voice. Biggest problem I'm having with this whole, what the red flag that I saw was that it was the big C, and it included the city of Clearwater. What they did was they removed the city of Clearwater, awarded them two seats, and now we're even less, we have less of a voice, because it's all of the big C except for the city of Clearwater. They're exempt for it, and they got two points to go along with it. So they went from, you're locked in with all the beaches, to now you're a big powerhouse, and you've got, you've got extra votes. We can all see what's going on, but I don't know if we really have a choice on this. So any comments? Mr. Banker, are these paid seats? I can't find a sound in this proposal.
I'd have to do further research about it. I'm not aware of them being paid seats. Commissioned, just commissioned, like PST and other seats, like it's, just like the mayor serving the big seat, it's a bunch of...
So you believe they're not paid?
It's my understanding they are not paid seats. They are, they are made up of officials who serve in other communities.
Then I have to agree, Mr. Roberts, I'd rather you have some type of voice.
Yep.
In there.
Yep.
No voice. Well, and that's why I asked the question. So if there's not any other comments, let's just go ahead and do a voice vote on this. Call in favor?
Aye.
I reluctantly. Any opposed? All right. The amendment to the interlocal agreement passes. All right. We're on to item number 13. This is consideration of authorization of the city manager to execute a contract for law enforcement services with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Mr. Reefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is authorized this year's contract for, with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office for law enforcement services, as well as the as-needed code enforcement services. Total contract with a discount that was recalculated this year for Bel Air Shore portion of the gap economy will be $608,556. And the as-needed rate for the code enforcement officer is going to be $59 per hour. We are continuing to schedule them three days a week for our shifts, and that seems to be working well. At the request of City Council, I did explore contractual services with the Largo Police Department. They gave me some numbers and calculations, and from what they're looking at and their budget, they feel that the expense is significantly more than what the sheriff provides. So I just wanted to put that information there for you to compare. So I recommend that we renew our contract with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department.
Okay, great. I'm going to have to go to the citizens for comments, and then we'll come back to the council. If anyone would like to comment on this. Yes, Mr. Hensick.
I hope nobody takes this wrong. I appreciate what the Sheriff's Department does. Really do. You know, they go in harm's way every day, bitter and done that. My point is, I have watched, since I've been a citizen in this community since 2015, when we've contracted with the sheriff. The increase percentage-wise is typically more than a CPI. And if my math serves me correctly, this increase is somewhere in the vicinity of 6% over last year. We don't even have a CPI number for COLA for Social Security until a month from now. I really wonder what it is besides everything that's in the contract, because I did read the contract. They're not doing more. We're still getting the same amount of service. What I would like to see as a citizen is more traffic enforcement. I've been up here multiple times. The speeding on side streets, the speeding on Gulf Boulevard, the turn lane being used as passing lane, passing on a bridge. Now, if the sheriff in Bel Air Bluffs can sit down there in different places, why can't our deputy assign, expend more time, if you will, patrolling as well as monitoring the main thoroughfare? And again, folks, those of you know, from my front yard, I've got a perfect view of Gulf Boulevard. I can see it. All I'm saying is, I think that the COLA, the increase is excessive, but we're not getting more. On its gain, certain things cost more, but 6% is pretty steep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Other comments from citizens? Citizen comments are now closed. Counsel, I need a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for law enforcement services with the Sheriff's Department. Motion. Motion made by Frank Banker.
Second.
Second by Shaw Elliott. Mr. Banker, you have the floor.
While the citizen made some great comments about the 6%, the mayor went to the city of Largo to try to reduce our costs and came back way higher. So it's another thing we can't do without. And I agree with you, there should be more enforcement. You know, when we got bored, going to beach cleanup on a Saturday morning at quarter of eight, I'm doing 35 to 19th Street from the causeway, and a guy passed. And like I said, you see it all the time. So I think we should pass this. I think it's, you know, they are our deputies in Sheriff's Department, they do a great job, and we just have to get them to do some more for you.
Thank you, Mr. Banker. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Roberts.
Just a question for a city manager or anybody. So if we, if somebody receives a ticket or speaking or reckless driving, whatever the case may be, do we get any of that revenue?
For traffic citations, I don't believe we do. For a ordinance, local ordinance violation, we get a percentage after administration fees through the clerk. So a traffic citation, I'll double check, but I don't want to receive traffic citations on our payments.
Because I agree with the citizen where, you know, I go there, I take a right on the Gulf Boulevard after I cross the bridge, and I wouldn't say many, but more than I'd like to see would people are like right on my tail, and I'm going 35, and they swing over to the left and use the bi-directional lane to pass, which is just stupid. First of all, they're definitely speeding in second lane, but maybe somebody come in the other direction that actually wants to use that lane and make a left-hand turn, and that could turn out really badly for everybody. So it's bizarre. I realize we only typically have one car, one deputy at a time. They can't see everything all the time, but I'm always cheering for that deputy to be there when that happens, so I could stop and comment to them.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any other comments? Nope. All right. I'm going to add that whenever we got notice of this, I actually wrote a letter to Sheriff's Department asking for bullet points that I could share with the council. I've done that once before, but I don't think, I don't know if you were here or not. Basically, attributed to rise in insurance rates, rise in salaries, and cost of fuel, and just inflation in general. It was the, I have left messages for Sheriff Baltieri before and not gotten a call for a day or two. As soon as I sent that letter, I would say within an hour, he called me personally on my cell phone and wanted to assure me that he wasn't picking on Bel Air Beach. Everyone in the county got the same increase. So whatever you were doing before, you got the 6 point whatever percent increase, and it's just the cost of doing business. As City Manager Reefer stated, he did contact Largo, and they just, they can't compete. So I would love to have an alternative, just so that we have something, so we can choose, sort of like we do with our garbage service, but that's just not the case. And if you look at most of the municipalities, the smaller ones like us, they all are doing the same thing. So we're not alone. Nobody's happy with the increases, but I am happy with, for the most part, the sheriff's services. I too would like to see more citations written, so people, the word gets out that Bel Air Beach is not the place to do those things, but it can't be everywhere all the time. So that being said, we have a motion on the floor. Is everyone ready to vote? All right. Renee, would you please call and roll?
Councilmember Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis.
Yes. So it passes unanimously. Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed, and thank you for checking into alternatives. Thank you. All right. Now we are on to item 16. It gets better. The consideration for accepting the Brown and Brown insurance proposal and authorizing a purchase order to back that up. Mr. Reefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. So in our August work session, we had a presentation of a proposal by Brown and Brown. The proposal is, you know, as we went over it, and there's a comparison to our current Florida Municipal Insurance Trust policy. It includes some more coverage in different areas of the insurance, and it is at a price, a premium that's less than what was proposed by the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust this year by about $9,000. This is something we discussed starting two years ago, to my knowledge, where I made contact with Brown and Brown, which is another major known insurance group that does local cities. And the first year, you know, he took our numbers and just wasn't able to compete. So I reported back, but he was interested in following up for this upcoming budget cycle, and we worked through the numbers, and he came back with this proposal. And based on the feedback he gave me, especially our workers' comp claims in our history, we are showing a positive, less workers' comp claims. And in his business, that calculated that we're under the average for municipalities throughout the state, and that it should have affected our rates to come down some, but we did not see that with FMIT. So in the past two years, our total premium has increased by about 58%. I mean, there was the big jump because of the property insurance and some of the storms that hit, but it still, it continues to increase. And Brown and Brown has proven to be just as good as the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, and they have a lot of similar programs. When I followed up with the cities in the area that use Brown and Brown, the positive feedback was all positive, but it was centered around their customer service and the ability of whenever they needed them, the service continued to excel. And I think that's very important, especially for a small city like us, and we need to take care of things when they happen. So there were some questions submitted from the council members that the insurance agent, Kyle Woodstole, was able to answer from his knowledge, and I've included that email as part of this now. And it is our recommendation that we approve a purchase order for the $76,496 to pay the full-year premium for the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Before we go to the council, let's go to the citizens. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? Citizen comments are now closed. Counsel, I'm going to need a motion to accept the proposal from Brown and Brown and to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order. Motion. Motion is made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Shaw Elliott. Mr. Banker, do you have the floor?
I really appreciate the diligence in this, Kyle, going out for somebody else. I remember when we brought in our current Honda writer a year ago about the increases, she just kept saying, oh, everything's going well, everything's going well. This guy went through everything with us. It's a cost statement to the city, it's a reputable company, I think they registered like 3.5 out of 4 stars. Good job.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess just that everything Member Bankard said is around Target. You know, we discussed this in detail, and I was very impressed with the representative from Brown and Brown at our workshop. We asked them a lot of questions for our receiver. His presentation was very thorough, easy to understand, and anytime we can save money, it's a good thing.
And I contacted a friend of the family who is very knowledgeable of all things insurance, and she actually, it looked to me like she spent about an hour preparing questions. And they weren't directed towards the insurance company, they were actually directed towards us, what, if we consider this, if we looked at that. It was very impressive, and I greatly appreciate her taking the time to do that. Her name is Crystal Powell at West Callahan. But I passed it off to the city manager, and he just passed it, sign unseen, right off to the insurance agent, and he came right back with all the answers. And I don't, did you, did you share that with the council?
In this agenda. In this agenda?
Okay, all right, great. So, yeah, I was very impressed, and I think that we're going to be very happy with the new campaign. Are there any other comments? No? All right. This is a big-ticket item, so Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis.
Yes. So, Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed, and a good job. And a good one.
Thank you.
All right, up next, item 17. Consideration of B-23-01 Drainant and Street Improvement Project Change Order Number Double O-2 for curb replacement on 22nd Street. Mr. Reefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So this would be the second change order proposed by Harbor Contracting, who is the current contractor for our street drainage improvement project. And they took the job of replacing the curbs on 22nd Street, and this includes from the west of the bridge all the way to Gulf Boulevard. They used the contract line and pricing from the bid, and this is the change order that is including all the elements of the work. For cost savings, and because the asphalt for 22nd Street was resurfaced in 2020, they proposed removing the one foot next to the, where the curb will be removed, so one-footed asphalt into the center of the street to give them room to form up the new curb. And then afterwards, having one foot of space allows them to get a compactor and to compact the base and then put asphalt back down, but it will not be a clean resurfacing, it'll be a strip of asphalt patch, which will look different than the rest of the road. I included a picture of Louisa Drive previous before we paved it, which had a similar work done. It might have been a little wider than a foot in that case, but it gives you an idea of what the street would look like. The only items where we look at the change order that were not on the actual bid are this survey, which it would be the surveying for the streets, and that was the actual first change order, was the survey layout of every other street that was originally part of the project. So that's what that item is. And then the one-foot asphalt patch. So since this is something that we did not do in any other part of the project, it is a price that they're giving us that is not contractual. So it was asked what the cost difference would be if we were to resurface the entire 22nd Street asphalt in those areas, and it would be a cost increase of $65,480. So $65,480. So I proposed doing the asphalt patch because of just the fact how new the asphalt was. So I'll leave it at that, that is the information for council consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Before we discuss this, let's go to the citizens for comments. Anyone who'd like to speak on this subject? I kind of assumed you would. Come on up, Mr. Hand.
John, here's the 22nd Street. I've been anxiously waiting for this, obviously. All right, so if I, just a question. So if I understand the change, the contractor wants to go from the street side of the curb out to the street one foot, so he can put forms in, is that what you're saying?
Correct. So he'll remove the curb, and then he'll cut, saw cut the asphalt one foot towards the center of the street.
Right from that curb. For room. That's what I thought, I just wanted to be sure. The other comment I want to make, I've been watching this contractor along the way north of Causeway, and frankly, I'm quite disappointed in the fill that they have provided after the curbing is put in. It looks like just plain old fill that you would use to fill leveled property. I mean, you know, they dig this up on the backside of people's property, and they're putting this stone, seeing, I've seen stuff as big as golf balls laying in those piles on the street. I guess that was part of the contract, but I'll talk with you about what I'm going to do when I get done with the curb from my place, because they're not putting it in my yard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Handzey. Council, we have a motion to accept project change order Double O-2 for curb replacement along 22nd Street.
So.
Motion made. Mr. Roberts, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, right. Councilmember Shaw Elliott. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we discussed this in one of the workshops, and I do have a couple of questions about the actual invoice that was provided, but the, I think it's important that we do that based on the current status of those gutters on 22nd Street. I think we should go ahead and move forward with that. But I do have a question about, just in my own mind here, Kyle, so the no-pay items for the survey layout and the one-foot asphalt patch. They're not charging us for that? Is that what they're saying?
No, that is saying that this is not a contract price, so this is a price that they're proposing based on the job, but it is not tied to the contract that currently exists.
Okay, okay. All right. And then the items above that, if needed items, for example, $30,000 for replacing the pavers, we may or may not use all of that or any of it.
I would expect less based on the other streets.
Okay. All right.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Counsel? Comments, questions? None? All right, well, in that case, it's, take two of them. Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis.
Yes.
So it passes unanimously. Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to number 18, unfinished business. Counsel, any unfinished business? Yes.
At the August council meeting during council comments, it was put on the record that the city has been credited $48,000 for the past two years from the Sheriff's Department regarding Ballard Beach overpayment, and Ballard Shores underpaying for deputy services. While I am bringing this up on our unfinished business, it was also said on the record by a council member during the council comments, we may not have been allocating a true amount fully owed to the city of Ballard Beach. I went off on that comment, which I do apologize tonight, although there is no mechanism to review any council comments once council comments are concluded by a councilman. I do want to say tonight, I do agree with that council member's comment that a true amount to be collected may not have been fully achieved, for reasons I sought repayment solely from the Sheriff's Department, since size and territory for the services was changed two years ago. As noted on the record during budget talks, I further noted during that work session at a figure of 100 grand, maybe, what is truly owed to the citizens of Ballard Beach. While the mayor of the July work session, July work session placed me in charge to go after these funds, mayor also noted that he may have made a mistake in directing a council member to perform such an assignment during the council comments of August. While I somewhat agree with the mayor's position, while the mayor does not have the authority to delegate a council member's assignment, in most cases, I do want to note two factors of the mayor's designation of placing me in charge of recollection of these funds. Under Section 2.045, there are charred mayorship without meetings under Robert's rules. There are 11 basic rules of duties under the chair under Robert's rules, and one of them is to expedite business. Of course, this does not give the chair the unfettered right of just assigning council members, but if you look at code, Florida Code, Section 166.021B, "The governing body of a municipality may expend public funds to attract and retain business enterprises in use of public funds where the achievement of such economic development goals constitutes a public purpose. The purpose of this chapter, which confers powers and duties of the governing body of a municipality, including any powers not specifically prohibited by law, which can be exercised by the governing body of a municipality, shall be liberally construed in order to effectively carry out the purpose of this section." So I cannot believe the mayor acted improperly, placing me in charge of retrieving the funds. Furthermore, as a resident taxpayer and the one who raised this issue this year and last year during budget talks, I would have pursued this matter regardless of the mayor placing me in charge or not, because it is my right and duty as a citizen to question any part of my government. Now, going back to the July budget meeting, a councilperson, person before the conclusion of the budget talks brought up the sheriff's costs. He noted that the Ballard Beach portion was incorrect, as we were overpaying, and Ballard Shores was underpaying. And he further noted, "It doesn't sound like the Sheriff's Department is going to say we shouldn't have paid less money." And these are all quotes of the record. I then questioned our attorney in regards to our councilperson's position, and the question to our attorney was, "Who owes us?" Our attorney then noted, "If it is the council's desire, that he would like to work with the city manager on this to see if any funds could be collected," but clearly noted, "Any such pursuit would be based on time and money to pursue this, and would be cost, and would it be cost-effective." The reason I bring this up, no council member made a motion to have our attorney work with the city manager on this. Further noted, should be that no council member made any objection of the mayor placing me in charge of recollection of the funds. Surely, I wasn't going to object, since I was thrilled at being given the task. The record will further show that this matter of the budget then was closed. Next thing, I asked for the sheriff's contract, and a day and a half later, we were granted the $48,000 credit from the Sheriff's Department. Now, while I was looking over the sheriff's contract, I want to note number 12 of the agreement, tonight it was changed to 13, regarding fines. It says, "All fines or other monetary fees were penalties rendered in line in any court as a result of charges made by the sheriff for offenses occurring within the city shall be distributed as provided by general law and the rules of the court. To the point of the matter, the only parking lots found in the town of Ballard Shores are the three lots, 6th, 12th, and 19th Street, given to the landowners. So noted beneficiaries east of Gulf Boulevard, which is Ballard Beach. I further want to note, for decades, any fines collected on those beneficiary lots went to the Ballard Beach, which used those funds for maintenance of the lots. It was only a few years ago Ballard Shores arbitrarily took away the fines from the residence of Ballard Beach, which was a valuable resource to maintain these lots. And to note, there is no provision in the contract that provides a path to fines to be collected by the town of Ballard Shores. Therefore, I am making a motion, because I am in full agreement with the councilman's comments of August, that a true figure is still owed to the city of Ballard Beach. Therefore, my motion is to have our attorney and city manager address going after Ballard Shores for the past underpayment of the use of the debt to be so noted in the sheriff's contract for the years 2020 and 2021, along with reimbursement of any and all fines collected in so noted lives 21, 43, and 66, found under the definition of the tax partial legal description Ballard Beach."
We'll have a second.
That'll be a second. But that was a, that was the motion?
Motion to go after, motion as in July, was to have the attorney and the city manager go after the true collection of money owed back to people of Ballard Beach.
Second.
You made the motion. Discussion. All right, we're discussing. Comments?
Certainly, a true up would be appropriate to understand whether the correct amount was collected, because I don't have the objection to the fact.
Can you speak into the microphone, please, the councilman?
I think a true up would be appropriate, and I don't know whether we need one or not, but an explanation of how the amount was calculated would be fine.
Is that what the motion is for?
Well, my motion is for to go after Ballard Shores, because the sheriff clearly said that they were reimbursing us when we did the geographical changes of size. So we did collect $48,000 from the Sheriff's Department, but for 2020 and 2021, Ballard Shores did two things. They took away our finding of the vehicles unauthorized parking in those lots, and they used excessive deputy services. The Sheriff's Department is paying, is reimbursing us, and I believe in full.
You're wanting to proceed against Ballard Shore.
As the councilperson noted in the budget talks of July, that he didn't believe that we're not collecting anything from the Sheriff's Department, that the true, and I agree with him wholeheartedly, that other money should be coming from Ballard Shores, because they abused the time a lot for the sheriff's, or contract, plus money from the contract doesn't give them the right to collect the funds. It's even collecting.
That's right. I just want to comment, a couple of things. First of all, I believe that Member Bankard's heart was in the right place when he received it after our workshop to contact the Sheriff's Department. What I had commented on at the, I guess, most recent meeting that we had, and I appreciate Member Bankard's, I guess, apology for how he reacted, I was just referring to, in the workshop that we had, the minutes showed that at some point after the mayor had agreed to have Member Bankard move forward in discussions with the contract with the Sheriff's Department, it then said after that, that the city manager would meet with Mr. Moore to put together and look at things to make sure we went forward properly, and then they would get back with council and let us know what their findings were. So that's the reference I made at that particular meeting, that that didn't take place, because there was no time for that to occur, because Member Bankard had contacted the Sheriff's Department, because he wanted to try to help the city, so I believe that. He just didn't, by doing that, the city didn't have the opportunity for the mayor and Mr. Moore to get together and delve into it deeper to find out what options were available to us, so that we might have increased the amount of money we would have gotten back from the Sheriff's Department. That's when I made that statement.
But for the record, there was never a motion to go forward to have the city manager and the city attorney to look into this, which would have been needed, because the city attorney, as noted, and it's on the record, if it's the council's desire.
Well, it was a workshop, right?
It was a workshop, but there was no, there was no directive from council to have him go after.
I would know that we need the conformity of a motion for that, and certainly within his responsibilities, the city manager to try to pursue any collections or investments.
He made, he made the recommendation, but I'm saying it's no councilman person that said, "I agree with that." He just can't, the city attorney, incorrectly or wrong, just can't, on his own accord, say, "Okay, I'm going to look into this matter," which isn't part of his retained.
The city manager can certainly bring him in on anything.
Sure he can, if it's the council's desire. That's what the charter says.
I'm wondering if this is more of an accounting issue before it becomes a legal issue, because I would like to see on paper exactly why you feel that another community that just so happens to be writing all the same contract that we are a, or is.
Well, like I said, in number 12 of the contract, which is now number 13, of the past three years, fines are supposed to be collected by the city. It doesn't say anything about the town. Ballard Shores has no part facilities except for our lots that are leased to the landowners of Ballard Beach. of Ballard Beach. Arbitrarily, they just took on their own accord and says, okay, we're not going to write tickets and we're going to tell the deputy, he's not allowed to write tickets for Ballard Beach. We used to collect those revenues, as the city manager said. We did get that revenue from city or citation ordinance violations. What I'm saying is, for years, there used to be the assumption that one hour a day was allocated to Ballard Shores for deputy enforcement. Ever since they took over writing tickets, it's been well over an hour. It's been two, maybe three, four hours a day. So I'm saying for 2020 and 2021, they owe us probably about $24,000 a year, like the sheriff said, why they gave us $48,000. Remember, they have no problems sending us a bill for $24,000 for legal expenses. I think we should do the same for that. Clearly, they abused the system. Clearly, they are continually abusing the system.
Any other discussion on this topic before we take a vote?
It seems like this could be dealt with informally.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at everybody. It seems as though this could be dealt with informally. I certainly support if we feel that we're owed money, if we feel that someone is inappropriately collecting fines when we should be the ones that are collecting it. You know, I'm happy to look into that, but I think that can be done on an informal basis. And then come back with findings.
Well, that's, that's what my motion is about, to have the city manager and the city attorney look into it.
That's not the way you stated it. You say it could go after.
It says, here's my motion, is to have our attorney and city manager address going after Ballard Shores for the past underpayment of the use of the deputies so noted in the sheriff's contract from years 2020 to 2021, along with reimbursement of any and all fines collected in so noted lots 2143 and 66 found under the definition of tax parcel legal description Ballard Beach.
Councilmember, I think the, my perception of the division in the discussion, it may be semantics, but as phrased, your motion opens with go after, which I think presumes the result, that there's something to pursue, and I think some of the discussion of your other councilmembers, and again, this is your guys' discussion, have them, just, it seems like you're talking past each other a little bit. I think, Member Bankard, what they're hearing in go after is sort of presuming the result of, and action shall be taken, whereas some of your fellow councilmembers are expressing, can we investigate and then determine whether a go after is the appropriate action? I think that's what I'm hearing different members say, but again, it's your discussion or result.
I can modify it by saying to address Ballard Shores for past underpayment of the use of the deputies.
Well, the motion's already been seconded, it's on the floor right now. Any other comments, questions? Do we want to vote on this now? Any vote?
Just because I just said so many seconds, so it doesn't mean I favor it, I just wanted to discuss.
Yeah, rightfully, we'll go to the citizen for comments, and then we'll take a vote. Anyone like to speak on this topic? Oh, citizen comments are now closed. Renee, would you please call the room?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
No.
Councilmember Elliott?
No.
And Mayor Gaddis?
No.
So the motion dies. All right, more unfinished business. Any council, anyone?
I have something that I'm not quite sure procedurally how this is done, but if, I can suggest at least an item for a work session, and that is to review again the issue of filling an additional seat on the council. I think all of us here completely support a democratic process. We support independence and free thought, and everybody having their particular view. But we are in a position that one vote from any of us can defeat a measure, and I'd like that we reconsider rebuilding the council to a five-member board.
Okay, well, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to address it anyway. Basically, we're having problems reaching a floor. We've had, this, this meeting is two weeks overdue. The council meeting next month will be a week late from when it's supposed to be. I agree with councilmember Elliott that we should, we should consider adding a fifth councilmember, but before I go any further, I thank all of you for actually being here and serving on the council. Each of you go the extra mile for Ballard Beach, you know, we may not always agree. I still believe we make a great team. I also realize that sometimes we encounter unavoidable conflicts, and that is okay where life happens. So occasionally, we're going to have to miss a meeting. Unfortunately, it prevents, or at least it delays city business from being conducted in a timely manner. So we are in a bit of a pickle, and part of that is on me, but the reason why that happened was I stayed with more than I didn't just want to put three people that we really didn't know that well on the council just to fill seats, especially whenever we have elected officials here on this, on this council. So today, I'm asking the council to resume accepting applications to have a fifth council member to be selected at our October regular meeting. And for those that have already applied, I'd like, Renee, I'd like for you to reach out to, to each of them if the council agrees, and see if they're still interested as being a possible candidate, and would like to be considered again. I would also like to give those who were once concerned with Form 6 the opportunity to apply now that it is no longer required. I think that they may not even be aware that, as it stands right now, it's on hold indefinitely until the courts figure it all out. So that we, I think it's possible that we may have more people to choose from. I don't think it's necessary to go to seven. I think five is what we need to make this council, to fill the missing piece. So my question is to the council, what are your thoughts about opening up the application process and let's elect a fifth council member on October the 14th? Yes.
I'm in favor of that. I actually have had a couple of conversations with biggest councilmembers that I was confident the main reason that they had left the council was because of the Form 6. And now that I explained to them the current status of the Form 6 versus Form 1, they showed an interest, so.
I would like to comment on that. I don't, first off, I can say that I haven't really, anyone that left because of Form 6, I hated to see them leave. However, Form 6 could always come back again, and this seat that we would be filling is, it would be occupied until 2026. So we've got two years, and the court system in the state of Florida have two years to decide whether they're going to do with whether they're imposing on our privacy, it's actually legal or not. I don't, I haven't heard anything else about it, but here's my point I'm going to make about that. If we brought one of them back in and Form 6 came back, we'd be right back where we are now. So also, there are people that actually did complete Form 6 all throughout the county, and they just did it because they realized that this is what I have to do to do the job. So not getting wholly against them, but I am, personally, I'm against bringing anyone back that designed straight before Form 6. So that's my two cents on that. Good. Other comments or questions?
I agree with you 100%, Mr. Mayor, because Form 6 could be, Form 6 could be put back into place any day, okay? And they had the right to resign. My hat is, Form 6 has been talked about for about three years in the state, and they knew that, and when they were running, it would probably get passed, and I've heard that later. So I've got a problem entertaining anybody previous from council that resigned because of Form 6. The only one I can remember that did resign from Form 6 was Linda, Belinda Livingston, as she noticed she was moving out of here. My biggest question is, do we have a council of seven, or do we have a council of five? And our attorney has given us, I guess, two versions of that thing. I would like to know which one we have.
I appreciate the inquiry. I have opined most recently that you have a council of seven. I've always said that you are a council of seven until, until, I consistently stated that if at your full composition until November 2026, you are a council of seven. I interpreted the import of other languages related to references to the council as to whether them, the council has seated or the council has provided for, and I've determined that the more prudent, I think both are lawful and reasonable interpretations of your charter, but the more prudent approach to mitigate risk, which is my charge, is that that charter provision also should be interpreted in a manner that references the council in its existing form of all available seats. It has always been my guidance since before the charter votes and after, that were you to be of your full composition as provided for in the charter, you are a charter, you are a council of seven, seven available seats. How you choose, that said, your charter also provides that the role of filling vacancies on the charter, on the council, is the charge and responsibility of the remaining council members. And so I wish to defer to your discretion and respect your discretion as provided for in the charter voted on and approved by your residents. And so it is left to you folks on how to fill your vacancies, but there are in fact, and have at all relevant times since the three vacancies arise, been three vacancies. My other advice to you as you folks embark on this process is I think that there's a general agreement among all of you that you need to begin filling at least one seat, whether all of you agree, whether it's one, two, or three, is up to you. I would suggest that you not get, and again, defer to you in the process, that you not get too mired in that, like, start by filling at least one, because the at least one vacancy is creating problems for you. I'm not saying don't have the discourse tonight, but, Member Bankard, I just want to answer your question and make sure that my, my advice on this is clear.
Well, if we have a council of seven, then we would need four votes to put it back in person.
I disagree with that. Is that an analogy? It's not analogy, it's an analysis, and I appreciate your perspective, but I'm charged with interpreting the code. I work for you folks, but my interpretation of your code, harmonizing language based on the statutes, the canons of statutory construction, giving every word meaning, and I did not consider this alone, I ran it by other attorneys as well to make sure that I was not reading it in a vacuum, and the consistent interpretation based on the language that says a vacancy shall be filled by, shall is compulsory language, shall be filled by a remaining vote of the, of the remaining members of the, of the council, and that's in 2.06C that leaves us.
Yes, it is, but if you go prior to 2.06, okay, it talks about a quorum of four.
That's actually subsequent. It's in 2.07C, and so, and that is to the quorum, and it actually, actually begins with an independent clause that references 2.06C as an exception there, too. I, I understand provisions, we don't need to necessarily agree. I've given my advice, as I joked in the past, I'm a husband and a father, I give advice all the time and have it ignored. That is my interpretation. I leave it to you folks on how you wish to administer it. You are the four charged with how you proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, I appreciate you at least put in my mind at ease. The, the one example that, that you gave me earlier was that had we lost another council member and we were down to three, according to Mr. Bankard, we could never.
No, that's not what it says.
We could never bring someone else in.
I didn't say that.
He did not say that. That's my interpretation. If you read 2.07C to require a quorum, that would be at least four members or a majority of the remain, of the council, and you interpret the council as seven, that was my interpretation, that it would work, that if you interpret them consistently that way, it could work. That a practicality, Mr. Bankard has never once said that, and I'm not attributing that statement to you, sir. That was my interpretation and why you have to harmonize the language.
What I was saying is, seeing goes into action if someone, if council didn't get reduced below.
All right, well, what's the general consensus here? I would like to bring in one council member, not three, and the main reason why is because the people spoke at the last election, and it was, I mean, it was merely unanimous that this city wanted five council members. We have the opportunity to give that to them now. I don't believe that we're breaking any laws by doing it, and I also believe that we will be a better council if we go ahead and bring that, that person in, whoever it is. I understand that we will have to have a majority vote to select someone, but we can hash that out of time, depending upon the number of candidates we have and qualifications, of course, and then debate, but that's what I'm asking to do, and I would just like to hear your thoughts, your thoughts, your thoughts on opening up the application process again, and, and please, Renee, back to her.
I absolutely support that. I do want to clarify a few things just so that we know the rules, and that is, one is that we, the remaining members of the council, as I understand, can fill a position, and we make it one, not all, and that a majority of the vote of these four is what counts. Then, one, five are in place, we are still a board of seven, therefore, a, the statute is still in place that says that we have to have four to have a quorum. So one person can be absent, which I think, thank you for raising that, because it's just, coordinating people's lives has been difficult, and we don't want to get in the way of taking this is done. So we have to have four, and then, once the board has four, five seats filled, we still need a majority.
Still need four votes, so if you, in the event you have, for example, should you appoint anybody to fill a vacancy and you reach five, no more at that time. Say you're at a moment where you have five council members who are voting seven. If one of you is absent, you can still have a meeting, which is not the case present. However, once you have that meeting, those four people are still going to have to vote. We're unanimous with that, because you're still going to need four for affirmative evidence.
Because it's a majority of seven.
But at least it's not, it's not stopping city business, and we're banning one person to. So the question at hand is, why would you put seven? Why would you, why would you want to put yourself back in the same situation you are in now so many times?
If, if we had three candidates that wanted to be on council?
One is, because we're going to five anyway, so it's somewhat awkward to bring people in and then.
But that's not what the quorum states right now, according to the attorney. The quorum at five would be three.
I think we're getting a little mired in the defined points of the language, but.
I think we're setting ourselves up for a suit. That's what I'm worried about.
I think, ultimately, you're.
Well, you know what? You have two attorneys here, okay? You had an attorney sitting in your seat, okay? And I'm not an attorney, but I can read. I mean, and I've made these remarks last year that I believe the charter amendments could be challenged because they were poorly presented to the voting populace. were poorly presented to the voting populace. You had a redundancy of people apply for their council jobs even though Form 6 was in front of them, and this council refused to accept them. I mean, I don't know why we did that. We wouldn't even have been in this situation right now. There's a man sitting right there who applied, he could have been up here, there was two other people right there, there was a father in the room tonight, his son wanted to be on. We could have had some people going with the council. So I am creating this mess.
Yeah? Well, you have any comments?
I'm in favor of moving forward with the five, but I do recall some of the voting that took place, and, and there was, uh, Member Bankard said, I didn't read this much, but the way you ended up voting would never have allowed us to move forward with anybody at that point. Well, I guess it could if it only required three, but anyway, it was, uh, at the time, we were, we were not just considering one necessarily. I think we were open to going to seven, but, but nothing moved forward at that particular meeting. But currently, right now, because that's for my, right now, I would be definitely in favor of advertising for an open position and voting.
Thank you.
Just, just to refresh, Mr. Member, Mr. Roberts, remember, okay, all due respect, when the three candidates came in, as charter amendments weren't changed yet, remember they hadn't filed with?
We're not filed with the Secretary of State, that was part of the, that was part of the issue.
So we needed to have seven. Okay, that was on the record.
I voted for everyone.
Now, four months later, as the charter amendments have been filed, we still need seven. So do you understand how I'm confused? So we needed seven in January, but until the charter amendments changed, okay, we're, we're, we're kept at five, okay? We only need five. So now we're being told by our attorney that we need seven. Now, is that not?
That's not what it says.
If you need seven, we need four for the quorum, because our council remains at seven.
We need that, yes.
Okay, so you see how I'm confused?
I've made no representations as to how many seats you folks should fill. I am deferring to you as the charter officers, or as the, as the elected officials whose responsibility is to fill the vacancies. I at no point have opined on whether you should have five, six, or seven, it's frankly not my decision to make. My advice to you has simply been about, about your quorum, about your votes, and the, and again, I maintain at no point have I, have I, at no point have I manipulated this process or anything of the sort. I gave an opinion, and true to my duty as a, as a, as a public officer in service of the public trust, I looked at the job you folks were asking me to do without any accusation, challenge, or attack, and said, I think I can manage my clients' risk better, I think this is a better way to interpret this code, and I view this charter, and I advise that, and it, and that is what I do. I, I work for you folks, if you're not happy with the job I'm doing, let me know, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, well, it sounds like I've got three people that are on board with, with moving forward. Renee, would you please advertise to start accepting applications and contact, oh, there's one of them right there, but, uh, contact the prior candidates and see if they're still interested. And also, uh, if anyone calls, please be fair, if, if they called, say, and want to apply and they have concerns about Form 6, would you please let them know that nothing is permanent? It's not permanently off, it's not permanently on, we don't know what it's gonna, what's gonna happen, but if they do have concerns, at least let them know that, hey, um, that Form 6 is always a possibility to come back. And what I would like to do is stop taking applications one week before the next council meeting.
Okay.
And then send us up the applications for review, and, uh, and we'll vote on, we'll take the long term. Thank you very much. All right, any other unfinished business? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
I would like to make a motion based on Member Bankard's, um, previous motion that failed. I think it's still a good idea for city manager and legal counsel, I know they meet many times during the week just to be a topic of discussion. When they do meet regarding any other opportunities that would be available to us to save or get money back regarding the chair's contract. The reason I voted against the motion from Member Bankard was I thought it was too specific regarding where we were going with it. I would, I would just like the city manager and Mr. Moore to, during their weekly discussions, look into other opportunities for our city to get additional funding back.
Second, I don't, I don't even think that that requires a motion, but if you, if you want to go through the process, I, I think we can just ask, hey, would you look in?
Perfect.
Do and I get some information to determine whether this is something worth pursuing or not.
Agreed, and maybe some of the things that Member Bankard brought up will come out of that conversation, I have no idea.
Would you like to retract your motion?
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Reefer and Mr. Moore, you're having a task assigned by the council to just look into things and give us a report based upon, um, Mr. Bankard's accusations. I guess that's the best way to say it.
Thank you.
All right, any other unfinished business before we move over to council comments?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, all right, this month, we begin with Councilmember Bankard.
My head's still spinning, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bankard. I was actually not even gonna call on you because of your, your, your other stuff, but I'm. All right, Councilmember Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have been going around and looking at the work that's being done by our contractor on the streets. Basically, when I'm coming from the east side to the west side, I take a ride and go to 20th where, where I live, and I pretty consistently just drive through 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, and then I'm home to see the work that's being done. And overall, I think they're doing a pretty good job. I always, we've had a lot of rain lately, and I take a look at the flow in the new gutters that have been put in, and for the most part, the water is flowing in the direction it's supposed to, at the rate that I think makes sense. A couple of times, they've had the, uh, little devices in front of the drains, things like that, but of course, it's not going to let the water get out as quickly as it needs to. So I'm confident that once the construction is completed, and based on what I've visualized, the water's going to flow properly, and the citizens are going to be happy, so that's all good.
All right, I appreciate that. Mr. Roberts, Councilmember Shaw, Elliott?
I actually have three items to address tonight, so I'll try to be free. One is tomorrow night is the first night of the, or, excuse me, the second night of the Sunset Social, so we encourage all of our citizens to come on by and come to the back porch here and meet your neighbors. And so, uh, nothing in particular is scheduled, just an opportunity to come and see folks, bring the kids, bring the dogs, bring games, bring nothing, it's just a nice informal opportunity to meet. I do want to emphasize also that this is a test and that it's only going to be offered for the next two months, so please come and show your support. Next thing is that, as anybody may have noticed, there's an election coming up, and I encourage all of our citizens to make sure that you were registered as a voter. If you want to vote by mail or through any other alternative means, watch those deadlines, make sure that you're registered in advance of that. If you want to vote by mail, get it in on time, and, um, you might see me there on the, on the day of the election. I always like going and doing it in person, it's just, it's more fun that way. The last thing I want to mention is something that will be on the ballot, and that is Amendment 2, which would establish as a constitutional right, a recognition of the right to hunt and fish. And on its face and in the summary for that amendment, that seems very innocuous and something that all of us indeed support. I want to, um, offer people to consider some of the issues involving this amendment. One is that we already have a statute that has been in place for a long time that recognizes the right to hunt and fish, and it's not been challenged, there's no effort to try to undo that, um, so I, I think that the Amendment 2 of the, to the Constitution would be not necessary. But there are two elements regarding this amendment that are not apparent, and one is that in addition to recognizing the right to hunt and fish, it includes, uh, any traditional means. And so what this means is that things that have been traditional methods of taking game will come back, even though over time they've been found to be inhumane. So things like bear traps, things like gill nets, things like spears, killing by poison, all of those things might be able to come back if we have an amendment that says there's a constitutional right to hunt and fish by traditional means. I ask you to consider that. And lastly, it also says that, um, hunting and fishing will become the preferred method in the state of Florida for managing wildlife. And that's a huge step. We have all sorts of measures through our, uh, agencies to look at scientific measures and other means of controlling wildlife and encouraging and supporting wildlife and, and supporting good conservation efforts. To say that hunting and fishing becomes the preferred method is way overreach in my view. So I encourage you to look at that, um, don't be deterred by the beginning language, because this thing is far broader than the right to hunt and fish. And in any event, please get out and vote.
I don't have any comments, uh, other than thanks to everyone who actually made it to the very end. And if anyone's at home, thank you for watching. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, goodnight, everyone.